Little girl, are you ready for some rock and roll? I said, are you ready for some rock and roll? Yeah, let's go!
Yeah, no, he knows, he tells me that. That's not me, that's... He's got to be turning out there. But he knows! Oh, they take it out!
One, two? Can you hear me? Woo-hoo! Yep. One, two, one, 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 one.
Yeah, I can't, I can't hear it through the phone, sir.
Okay, one, two, oh, now I can hear myself now.
Yep.
Well, the beat I'm on is a crazy beat. When the lights are low and the music's high, Dancing to the beat of Atlanta and let it go. When that sunset's over the hill, I won't stop, I'll rock and still, Got a lot of rhythm in my soul. Well, now, baby, baby, let's go tonight together. Baby, baby, when you hold me tight in the blue, What you need to me? The big black hands on the clock, Tell me that it's time to rock. Got a lot of rhythm in my soul, let's go! Well, come on down, take with me, drive. Let's let 'em know that we're alive Till the break of dawn, we'll yell for more, more. When that sunset's over the hill, I won't stop, I'll rock and still, Got a lot of rhythm in my soul. Well, now, baby, baby, let's go tonight together. Baby, baby, when you hold me tight in the blue, What you need to me? The big black hands on the clock, Tell me that it's time to rock. Got a lot of rhythm in my soul. Got a lot of rhythm in my soul. Got a lot of rhythm in my soul! Oh, we got there in the end!
Story of my life!
Well, he's rocking on the corner on the edge of town. People come from around. They giggle and they wiggle and they sway, sway. Dance all night and rock all day. Baby, baby, this is all you have to say. Me, 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 money, mo. Catch a hip hop by the toe with the hollies. Then you know, rock and roll and it can't go. It's about the rhythm of the beat, rock and roll, yeah! Well, if you wanna get a part, better listen to me. Get down to the corner, pretty guys, you see. Standing in line, just ready to go. Oh, you gotta yell, "Zini, me, ni, money, mo." Baby, 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 let me start to rock, oh, yeah! Me, 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 money, mo. Catch a hip hop by the toe with the hollies. Then you know, rock and roll and it can't go. It's about the rhythm of the beat, rock and roll, woo! Well, if you wanna get a part, better listen to me. Get down to the corner, pretty guys, you see. Standing in line, just ready to go. Oh, you gotta yell, "Zini, me, ni, money, mo." Baby, 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 let me start to rock, oh, yeah! Me, 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 money, mo. Catch a hip hop by the toe with the hollies. Then you know, rock and roll and it can't go. It's about the rhythm of the beat, rock and roll. It's about the rhythm of the beat, rock and roll, woo! Thank you! This one's called "Bang Bang." Why trade you my heart for your heart, baby? All my kisses to prove. Why trade you my heart for your heart, baby? All my kisses to prove. So if you feel you like to make a deal, Just cock the pistol and move it to you. Bang, 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 bangdy bang. Bang, bang, bang it bang, bang. Bang, bang, bang. Bang it bang. Why trade you my lips or your lips, baby? All my huggetto prove. Why trade you my lips or your lips, baby? All my huggetto prove. So if you feel you like to make a deal, Just cock the pistol and move it to you. Bang, 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 bangdy bang. Bang, bang, bang it bang, bang. Bang, bang, bang. Bang it bang, yeah! Why trade you my love for your love, baby? All my devotion to prove. Why trade you my love for your love, baby? All my devotion to prove. So if you feel you like to make a deal, Just cock the pistol and move it to you. Bang, 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 bangdy bang. Bang, bang, bang it bang, bang. Bang, bang, bang. Bang it bang. Why trade you my heart for your heart, baby? All my love to prove. Why trade you my heart for your heart, baby? All my kisses to prove. So if you feel you like to make a deal, Just cock the pistol and move it to you. Bang, 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 bangdy bang. Bang, bang, bang it bang, bang. Bang, bang, bang. Bang it bang. Bang it bang. Bang it bang. Bang, bang, bang. Bang it bang. Thank you! Well, I've been down in Akaseki, Hiroshima too. Same I did to him, baby, I'm gonna do to you. Cause I'm a boogie mama, just about to blow my trumpet. Yama, yama, a boogie mama. When I start it up, you ain't nobody gonna make me stop. I drink a quart of sake, smoke dynamite. I taste it with tobacco. She'll have you like a llama. Boogie mama, mama, just about to blow my trumpet. Yama, yama, a boogie mama. When I start it up, you ain't nobody gonna make me stop. Thank you, wow! Well, you can talk about me, say that I mean. I'm on your head, baby, when I trip and swing. Yama, yama, just about to blow my trumpet. Yama, yama, a boogie mama. When I start it up, you ain't nobody gonna make me stop. Some people say I'm crazy, say that I mean. I'm on your head, baby, when I trip and swing. Yama, yama, just about to blow my trumpet. Yama, yama, a boogie mama. When I start it up, you ain't nobody gonna make me stop. Okay, now! I've been down in Akaseki, Hiroshima too. Same I did to him, baby, I'm gonna do to you. Cause I'm a boogie mama, mama, just about to blow my trumpet. Yama, yama, a boogie mama. When I start it up, you ain't nobody gonna make me stop! Thank you! I called a train, I met a man. He was a hipster and a real gone guy. He was pretty from New York City. And we dropped him down off that hill. With a hay and a hoe, well, I just couldn't let him go. Get along, sweet little honey, get along. They'll be on your way, get along. Sweet little honey, get along. They'll be on your way, with a hay and a hoe. Well, I just couldn't let him go. Well, the train kept rolling all night long. Train kept rolling all night long. Train kept moving all night long. Train kept rolling all night long. With a hay and a hoe, well, I just couldn't let him go. Let's go! We met at the stop in Albuquerque. He must have thought I was a real gone jackal got betrayed. An old pair stole, and I was so fine, I just couldn't let him go. Get along, sweet little honey, get along. Yeah, 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 oh! Sweet little honey, get along. They'll be on your way, get along. Sweet little honey, get along. On your way, with a hay and a hoe. Well, I just couldn't let him go. Well, the train kept rolling all night long. Train kept rolling all night long. Train kept moving all night long. Train kept rolling all night long. With a hay and a hoe, well, I just couldn't let him go. Take it! I called a train, I met a man. He was a hipster and a real gone guy. He was pretty from New York City. And we dropped him down off that hill. With a hay and a hoe, well, I just couldn't let him go. Get along, sweet little honey, get along. They'll be on your way, get along. Sweet little honey, get along. They'll be on your way, with a hay and a hoe. Well, I just couldn't let him go. Well, the train kept rolling all night long. Train kept rolling all night long. Train kept moving all night long. Train kept rolling all night long. With a hay and a hoe, well, I just couldn't let him go. Thank you! Mama, can I go out tonight? I've been good all week long. Well, I don't need no chocolates with cherries inside. Oh, mama, I just wanna go out tonight. Well, mama, can I go out tonight? There's a real cool cat, I got my eyes on. Well, now, mama, he was only seventeen. Oh, but by the way, the guy was my usual. I just wanna go downtown, see what the other guys are doing. I'll be home before quarter to nine. Mama, you know I really ain't fooling. Mama, well, please, please, can I go? Oh, Lord, will I be home, what you know? What you know? Well, mama, can I go out tonight? Cause it won't be long before the sun is coming down. Well, now, mama, before it gets too late. Well, I just wanna break a car, they're going down. I just wanna go downtown, see what the other guys are doing. I'll be home before quarter to nine. Mama, you know I really ain't fooling. Mama, well, please, please, can I go? Oh, Lord, will I be home, what you know? Take it away! I just wanna go downtown, see what the other guys are doing. I'll be home before quarter to nine. Mama, you know I really ain't fooling. Mama, well, please, please, can I go? Oh, Lord, will I be home, what you know? Oh, Lord, will I be home, what you know? Oh, Lord, will I be home, what you know? Thank you, you like that one, eh? Till I once again with you. Just the way we are tonight. Well, I will keep my promise true. Till I once again with you. Till I kiss you once again. Keep that love locked in your heart. Darling, I love you, baby. We will never have to part. Though it may break your heart and mine. A minute when it's time to go. Remember, dear, these ways of mine. And me, I love you so. Till I once again with you. Just the way we are tonight. Well, I will keep my promise true. For you are my guiding light. Though it may break your heart and mine. A minute when it's time to go. Remember, dear, these ways of mine. And me, I love you so. Till I once again with you. Just the way we are tonight. Well, I will keep my promise true. For you are my guiding light. Well, I will keep my promise true. Till I once again with you. Thank you! It's some modern rockabilly for you. This is originally done by Shana May and the Mayhams, but I'm a great fan of theirs, so I have to do this one. My baby calls me sugar, but sugar ain't so sweet. Cause when I caught him cheating me, His face should be so sweet. I put sugar in the tank. I put sugar in the tank. Now the engine will crank. I put sugar in the tank. Well, when I caught him cheating me, In deep, deep, so sore. Ruined the world we made in love. It's pride, I don't cry no more. I put sugar in the tank. I put sugar in the tank. It's hard to say. I put sugar in the tank. Yes, I did! Well, the thing that he loved most of all is vintage hot rock music. Well, I just done the sweetest thing, he won't be writing. I put sugar in the tank. I put sugar in the tank. This girl, you won't think. I put sugar in the tank. One more time. My baby calls me sugar, but sugar ain't so sweet. Cause when I caught him cheating me, three bears should be so sweet. I put sugar in the tank. I put sugar in the tank. Now the engine won't crank. I put sugar in the tank. I put sugar in the tank. I put sugar in the tank. It's hard to say. I put sugar in the tank. Thank you. This one's for all you drinkers. Way down in the woods where everything's fine. All them headcrats drinking that wine. Drinking that mess with delight. And when they get drunk, they fight all night. Wine's for the only drink, wine, my boy. Wine's for the only drink, wine. Drink your wine, squirt it in the pail, sip it all in me, yeah. Oh, wine, wine, wine. Oh, wine, wine, wine. Oh, wine, wine, wine. Yeah, wine, wine, wine. Way down in the woods, first step of me. Let's go. Well, I tried to make a little dawdlin' dine. Let's get together and drink a little wine. Somebody fit and somebody warm. You buy sherry, you're doing it smart. Wine's for the only drink, wine, my boy. Wine's for the only drink, wine. Drink your wine, squirt it in the pail, sip it all in me, yeah. Oh, wine, wine, wine. Oh, wine, wine, wine. Yeah, wine, wine, wine. Oh, wine, wine, wine. Way down in the woods, first step of me. Yeah. Way down in the woods where everything's fine. All them headcrats drinking that wine. Drinking that mess with delight. And when they're drunk, they fight all night. Wine's for the only drink, wine, my boy. Wine's for the only drink, wine. Drink your wine, squirt it in the pail, sip it all in me, yeah. Oh, wine, wine, wine. Yeah, wine, wine, wine. Oh, wine, wine, wine. Yeah, wine, wine, wine. Way down in the woods, first step of me. Anyone out there need a little lovin'? Well, I need a little lovin', I need a little lovin', I need somebody to call. I need a little lovin', I need a little huggin', I need someone who's mine alone. I long for someone who needs a little lovin' too. One needs a girl, kiss, kiss, kiss. One needs boy, hug, hug, hug. That love is true, and honey, that's you. You're the answer to my heart. You and me should be good for. Well, I need a little lovin', I need a little lovin', I need somebody to call. I need a little lovin', I need a little huggin', I need someone who's mine alone. I long for someone who needs a little lovin' too. I need food, yum, yum, yum. I need sleep, oh, oh, oh. But food and sleep, my body can't keep. What about my heart inside? Heart and soul need to be satisfied. Well, I need a little lovin', I need a little lovin', I need somebody to call. I need a little lovin', I need a little huggin', I need someone who's mine alone. I long for someone who needs a little lovin' too. One needs boy, kiss, kiss, kiss. One needs girl, hug, hug, hug. That love is true, and honey, that's you. You're the answer to my heart. You and me should be good for. Well, I need a little lovin', I need a little lovin', I need somebody to call. I need a little lovin', I need a little huggin', I need someone who's mine alone. I long for someone who needs a little lovin' too. Well, I need a little lovin', I need a little lovin', I need a little lovin', I need a little huggin'. I long for someone who needs a little lovin' too. Anyone out there got a Cadillac?
Why, what?
This one's about a brand new Cadillac. Baby, 'cause I've been a brand new Cadillac. Oh, my baby, 'cause I've been a brand new Cadillac. Well, look, tell me, honey, I would never come back. Ooh, I said, baby, 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 won't you listen to me? Come on, sugar, come on in my bed. Well, me and my boy, we never will be. Play the candle along the path of fire. All the candles roll along the path of fire. Well, me and my boy, we ride by his side. Ooh, I said, baby, 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 won't you listen to me? Come on, honey, come on in my bed. Turn the big car around and come on back to me. Take it away. Play the candle along the path of fire. All the candles roll along the path of fire. Well, me and my boy, we ride by his side. Ooh, I said, baby, 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 won't you listen to me? Come on, sugar, come on in my bed. Turn the big car around and come on back to me. I said, come on back to me. I said, come on back to me. As mentioned earlier, this is our last song, by the way. And the band's named after this band. Can't be words out. This is called Rockin' Wild. Black greasy hair and turnip cheese. Motorcycle boots that look real mean. Fifteen men by his side. Looking for a woman to take for a ride. When darkness comes, it's gonna go rockin' wild. When darkness comes, it's gonna go rockin' wild. See them dudes coming down the street? They're too good, they'd never believe. Folks don't know what's going down. Cause they make the rules in this city town. When darkness comes, it's gonna go rockin' wild. When darkness comes, it's gonna go rockin' wild. Light up, flying in the street? They're too good, they'd never believe. Blue lights flashing the sunny street? People start running like you've never seen. When darkness comes, it's gonna go rockin' wild. When darkness comes, it's gonna go rockin' wild. Black greasy hair and turnip cheese? Motorcycle boots that look real mean? Fifteen men by his side? Looking for a woman to take for a ride? When darkness comes, it's gonna go rockin' wild. When darkness comes, it's gonna go rockin' wild. Rockin' wild, yeah, rockin' wild. Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.